Thank you. All right, we're going to call the special session of Xenia City Council meeting an order. Come over, roll call please.
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowell.
Here.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
President Eagle is running late. He will join us shortly, but we're going to go and get started with the presentation for economic development initiatives. Start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thanks to the council who are here tonight. I know we've had a lot of extra special meetings here, especially this time of year when it's so busy. So I know my wife's irritated that I'm at another meeting tonight, so I appreciate you all being here. We have a presentation we want to run through this evening to update council on our recommendations and suggested priorities for economic development moving forward. As part of the presentation tonight, we'll be laying out some areas where we have budgeted, as we suggested in our last budget conversation last week, additional resources. And so we want to make sure council is aware of that and is supportive of that, and that they are included in the final budget for next year. So we have, again, a brief presentation that we'll run through here tonight, and then open it up for questions afterward. So to get us started, economic development, as we've, I think, traditionally approached it, has been sort of a linear model rather than sort of a three-dimensional approach, well-intentioned, but I think with limited results, as contemporarily thinks, the environment around us has continued to change. In many cases, I think, we have been more reactive and proactive, and so we just recognize that we are at a critical point in our community's history and have needed to reevaluate where we're at relative to our economic development efforts, and look at how we amend those efforts and position ourselves for more success moving forward. To advance our economic base, we understand that we have to be more contemporary. We need to combine our traditional, some of the traditional ED programs that are effective with more advanced concepts and a more intensive effort. We also recognize that addressing just the essential economic development subjects without attending to broader community issues is a mistake, that is a mistake in that it's fairly short-sighted. So we will look to expand our efforts to address core community development needs as well. So offering a holistic approach means looking 360 degrees around us to identify economic assets to capitalize on, as well as community deficiencies that we need to improve upon. Doing so gives us ED360. ED360 is the sort of code name, if you will, of our new strategic approach to ensure economic success in Xenia. ED360 will, in essence, evolve as our economic development strategic plan. So we ask ourselves, what must this plan include to be successful? First, it needs to be comprehensive. It must address a diversity of economic and community opportunities and deficiencies. Second, it needs to be more intensive. It needs to lay out, in addition to just laying out fancy concepts, it has to be rooted in a strategy that's action-oriented, and it must be proactive and consistent. It's got to be measurable. As we take on more work here and invest more financially, we need to ensure that we're moving in the right direction and wisely investing, and so programs need to be measurable and consistently monitored. We need to have greater financial investment. I think all of council's talked about this. We've been talking about this over the course of the past year. To gain a greater return, we need to provide a greater investment, and so we're recommending new resources that would be strategically allocated to maximize effectiveness. And finally, it should be integrated with X-Plan. We have committed, this council's committed, to X-Plan as a definitive directional document and set of strategies, so the strategic ED efforts must be aligned with and be an extension of the core strategies and priorities of the X-Plan to ensure consistency. And so we've come up with a graphic, and it's kind of pretty and kind of busy. We want to spend a couple of minutes talking about what this means. And so we have ED360. It consists of 13 priority investment areas. And among those priority investment areas, we have downtown revitalization, retention and expansion, business attraction, entrepreneurship and business planning, marketing, branding and image enhancement, workforce development, infrastructure readiness, town and gown, quality education and healthcare, tourism and special events, housing, neighborhood revitalization, recreation, entertainment, trail system, and the regulatory environment. These priority investment categories are interconnected and, in some cases, overlapping to ensure comprehensiveness. They are not all within our unilateral ability to control, but they are all essential categories within our community that must be addressed, and they all point to economic success. We want to spend a few minutes breaking down not all of these categories, because I don't want to keep you here all night, but we want to highlight some of the particular categories that we feel are some of the most critical, some of the most important, and some of those that include some continuing initiatives or new initiatives, particularly those for which we are requesting in a budget additional resources. So first, we want to look at downtown revitalization, starting with just a rehash of the Design Assistance Program and the Design and Code Assessment Program. These are two programs that were launched over the last two years. We are recommending in next year's budget, as was the case in this year's budget, a $40,000 investment from our 233 Special Miscellaneous Permits Fund. These programs are focused on providing assistance to downtown property and business owners to position them to address facility needs in their buildings downtown. So within those program areas, we're looking at three specific things that we're trying to achieve. One is downtown housing, which we all recognize is a vital component of a really vibrant downtown. So again, providing these resources to encourage more downtown residential. We want overall reduced vacancy. We want to position these building owners to have facilities downtown that are marketable and habitable for a productive enterprise. And then code compliance. We want to make sure that these facilities are not only compliant with our zoning code, but fire code, building code, that they're safe and secure for the future. Next, the Hub District Task Force. You've heard us talk a lot about the Hub District. As we talk about the Hub District, we're generally talking about the area around the AV Building southward to Xenia Station. And so we've already focused some time, effort and attention on that. That'll be another area that we highlight as a priority moving forward in 2015. And you'll note some of these in the presentation are asterisked, and the reason I did that, we're not seeking any additional funding for those items at this time, but we reasonably suggest or can predict that at some point in the future, they will require some additional resources, either through planning phases or potentially even through capital development. But we just wanted to highlight that those are areas where we may need additional resources, either direct capitalization or incentivization. So again, the Hub District, we're focusing on the AV Building and brownfield properties adjacent to it, trying to create a critical mass. We've had some really positive discussions here this fall. We deem that project a long-term, a five or more-year project to realize some type of significant revitalization and redevelopment. But again, it is such an encompassing project that we unfortunately need to start on that now and putting our ducks in a row. Finally, under this downtown revitalization, again, these are not all of the programs, all the initiatives, but we wanted to highlight some of the key things that we believe will have significant return value. The last one is a continuing emphasis on the Xenia Town Square redevelopment. As I've tried to engage council fairly regularly, we are continuing to work with several development entities for projects in the town square. They're in the final phases of locking down investors or investment to capitalize the Family Entertainment Center, and they are still, as of last report, on track for work beginning in principle in that facility in January. We did have a very positive meeting with a developer and representatives from the Fire Division, the Building Department, and Planning and Zoning, to make sure that we are fast-tracking, streamlining efforts to ensure code compliance and just making sure that we're providing them with services and understanding of what will have to be met there. So again, downtown revitalization, we feel like overall it's important. Obviously, a thriving core is a sign of a prosperous community, so downtown revitalization continues to be a key category. Next, retention and expansion continues to be one of our most important priorities. Obviously, small businesses in our community are a major provider of jobs, and a diverse local economy is an important approach that we want to take. So looking at retention and expansion, some specific programs, we want to introduce a new program called OpenX, and we are suggesting and have included in the budget a $5,000 line item to support this program. I'm going to kick it to Steve for a minute, just to talk a little bit about what the OpenX program would entail.
The OpenX program actually came as a result of some conversations I had with my counterpart in Fairborn. They have a similar program that they just rolled out about a year ago, and it has been pretty successful for them. One of the things that we've learned is that a lot of our small businesses are very good at running their business, but when it comes time to make that decision, do we expand our building? Do we build a new building? Do we look for a larger building to move into? They're kind of lost. Obviously, each one of those options has pros and cons, and it can be kind of difficult sometimes to figure that out. What the OpenX program would do would be to hire a consultant, Carter &amp; Klein. These two people have a long, long history in commercial construction in the Miami Valley. They have excellent relationships with most of the commercial contractors and subcontractors, and essentially, they would act as an owner's representative. We would pay for the first four or five hours of their time. They would consult with the businesses and try to help them kind of lay out what would be the best option for them. You know, do they want to lease a larger facility? Would it make more sense for them to expand where they're at or perhaps buy new? And then even beyond that, they can help them get through that whole getting a contractor-hired process. If you haven't been through that, it obviously can be rather daunting. So this is something to help get that started. We wouldn't pay necessarily for start-to-finish project, but really just to kind of get the ball rolling, and then if the businesses feel that it's worthwhile, they certainly could continue to contract with Carter &amp; Klein to finish that out.
Again, that would be a direct service provision to local businesses, kind of a resource to bridge the gap between where they are and where they want to be, and providing professional services to help to achieve that. So we want to pilot that in the forthcoming year, suggesting a $5,000 investment for those consultative services. The next continuing priority or investment initiative is our Business Outreach Program. We'll continue to enhance rapport and build relationships with our businesses and business leaders. Obviously, understanding the needs and obstacles and opportunities of our businesses can go a long way toward helping them grow and expand, so we want to pick up where we've left off with gaining those efforts. Some additional news, special programming that we would like to look at, highlighting local businesses, again, suggesting some resources in the budget to help facilitate that. We are suggesting programs similar to like a Taste of Xenia, highlighting a local food service, providing not only an event for the community to attend, but an opportunity for local businesses to share what they're producing and provide some marketing for those entities. We also want to conduct a business fair. A tried and true method, that's not new, not contemporary, it's, you know, it's an old idea, but we want to provide new options to get more awareness out there of local businesses and, again, just trying to provide a connection between service and material needs in our community with the businesses that are providing it. So those would be two new programs that we'd be undertaking next year. And finally, industry roundtables. We want to continue to facilitate opportunities for growth and expansion by connecting different industries within our community and have that opportunity for dialogue, for troubleshooting, problem-solving, and potentially for mutual resource allocation. So again, industry roundtables, an opportunity to really extend conversations among different industries in the community. Next category is business attraction. Again, we want to maintain and expand a focus on attracting new businesses to our community. Two key components here to start with. One is a formal industrial recruitment plan. We want to be able to document a strategy behind how we are recruiting new industries in our community. Three specific things or components that will be in that, it won't be just these three things, but three things to highlight. DPNL Certified Site Program is a program that can position us to be able to move quickly with a shovel-ready site. I'm going to kick it to Steve again to kind of talk about that program and where we're at with that.
Thank you. And again, this is something that I've mentioned in some of the quarterly updates. Many states have certified shovel-ready site programs. The state of Ohio does not. DPNL, after hearing a lot of complaints from myself and other folks, decided to step up and hire a group called McCollum Sweeney. They are a nationally-known site certification consultant. They're putting together a program to gather all of the information that typically goes into this, and I can tell you, it's quite comprehensive. In fact, Phase Two of the application is due tomorrow. We sent it in this afternoon, probably about that thick with information, everything from available utilities, size, capacity, et cetera, to all of the various due diligence that you would have to do on real estate, environmental reports, archaeological reports, et cetera. Not all of those have necessarily been done, but they're looking to see what needs to be done, what can be done fairly soon. We have two sites in the city of Xenia. We're working with Green County on the OVCH site along Innovation Drive on that application, and we are also submitting the Arnovitz site that's in the Xenia Industrial Park. Again, both of those were sent in today. We anticipate a site visit in January from the consultant, and we'll then move on to the final in Phase Three, which is going to be, will take some upfront money. There is going to be some expense that will be incurred, especially doing some of these due diligence reports and conversations with Mr. Arnovitz. Certainly, he is willing to pay a portion of that, but has asked that the city provide some assistance as well. In this case, we're talking thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars, but it is still an investment, and certainly, we're also talking to the county, and the CIC appears to be willing to make the investments that they need on the OVCH property.
Another critical component of the industrial recruitment plan will be a water resource focus. City of Xenia is blessed with our water resource. We have an aquifer that we draw from that is rated at 11 million gallons a day, which means we could draw that much a day, and the aquifer would naturally replenish itself. Our plant is designed for eight million gallons a day to be pumped and treated. We're currently in production and distribution of less than four million gallons a day, about three and a half million a day. So we have ample excess capacity. So again, we want to position ourselves, to market ourselves to industries that are heavy water users, because it's a natural resource that we have very plentiful and can provide very cheaply. Agriculture is another area where we have not, I don't think, placed enough emphasis and attention. We are uniquely positioned, not only because of our geography and history, but with Central State University's 1890 Land Grant status, and you'll hear that element sewn throughout this presentation as well. An abundance of new federal resources will be earmarked, provided to Central State University for a whole host of programs that the city can benefit from. So we're not suggesting in any way that we look to, you know, annex farmland. What we're saying is, can we position ourselves to be a home to services and resources that support the agriculture industry and really position ourselves to court new businesses and job opportunities in that area? So again, overall, we'll be putting together and sharing with council an industrial recruitment plan, likewise, a retail recruitment plan. We don't want to go to an event like ICSC in spring and just kind of, you know, dartboard who we want to try to attract. We want there to be some strategy behind that. So two key areas, based on feedback from local businesses and local citizens that we want to focus on, are first hospitality. We need quality rooms in this community for people to stay at, whether it's visitors for Athletes in Action. I met with Jerry Dendiger today and had this discussion. Whether it's Central State University, whether it's someone here consulting for a local business, they need a quality place to stay, and we want to make sure we can provide that. So we'll be looking at the hotel industry and opportunities there. Additionally, we want to respond to something I think everyone in this council's heard, and I think the situation is getting better, but we want to make sure we have quality, diverse food service options. We've got some fantastic new restaurants that have opened up recently. I'll put a plug in for Solar Flare, great new local restaurant, providing really good food at a really reasonable price. But again, we have a significant leakage issue when it comes to a lot of the retail components, and certainly, food service is one of them, and so that's something that we'll be specifically looking at. Again, ICSC, the intention at this point is for Steve and I to attend that in the spring, so we want to have a product well-planned out, discuss that with council in advance of that spring trip to maximize that opportunity. Finally, in this area, we have what I've sort of, for lack of a better term, titled agility program funding. And what I mean here, this year, I think, we've all experienced a couple of opportunities in Xenia Town Square where we had some leads and connected the dots. We had opportunities to pursue something, but we needed some dollars to be able to do a study, to have an appraisal done, something along those lines. So we are requesting and have programmed into the budget an additional $10,000 that we're calling these agility program funds, just so that we have an opportunity that we need to respond to fairly quickly, that we have resources available. Time is money in the business world, and so we want to be able to respond as quickly and effectively in meeting some of those study or appraisal needs, that sort of thing. Again, trying to position ourselves to move at the speed of business rather than the speed of bureaucracy. Next category we wanted to talk a little bit about is another really critical area for us, where we identify some deficiencies and are asking for a significant investment to try to meet the needs. Marketing, branding and image enhancement. As we discussed with council in the budget work session, we are recommending the addition of staffing to provide a sort of a comprehensive role related to marketing, public relations. As we discussed with council, and we're facing a significant budget challenge, and so we want to be sensitive to that, at the same time, we recognize that investment in this area could more than pay for itself if successful. So what we're suggesting at this point is, addition to the budget of a full-time position with council's authorization to fill that full-time position, but what we'd like to do is take a look at the market. If we can do this part-time, we'll do it that way. I want to be sensitive to the financial situation. But again, if we feel like we can't fill a role with a quality individual on a part-time basis, noting that there is a full-time need, we'd like council's authorization to do that. So what would that position do? Well, we see it being multifaceted. I don't know that we're going to get the silver bullet and get someone who has a skillset in all the areas we're asking for, but there are certain core skills that we'd like to have and abilities, and we'll look to build on the rest. But we need the ability to look at our brand situation, develop and enhance that, and manage our overall brand position. Service a primary public relations coordinator, so maintaining our websites, particularly our economic development website, to make sure that it's totally functioning and up to date at all times, as well as our primary websites. External communications, so development of press releases, other special information pieces that would go out. And publications, our newsletter, our internal staff newsletter that we've kind of put on the back burner. We have to provide annual utility consumer reports for our water utility, and they would be involved in that. So really coordinating our overall effort in terms of public outreach. With this, we're also suggesting that we will need some degree of additional contractual service assistance to help really narrow down our overall marketing approach, perhaps and work on final brand identification as well. So we're suggesting there'd be some additional contractual services, and that would include, of course, creation of those materials, so whether they be something published or some type of digital media resources to really engage that marketing plan. Finally, in this category, and again, it's, you know, there's a lot more need and a lot more opportunities than what we're covering, but another area we think is important to highlight is a continuing emphasis on streetscape, landscaping and physical enhancements. There's something to be said for the psychological image, but there's also a lot to be said for the physical image of the community. So all of our public spaces, entryways, West Main Street enhancement downtown, we want to have a continued emphasis on those areas and making sure that they are well-tended and taken care of, that it has a positive physical representation for the city. Next category, category 78 feels like at this point, workforce development. My personal feeling is this may be one of the top two or three areas we need to focus effort and attention on, and I think you'll see that in some of what we're presenting here. We can talk all we want about trying to attract industries. If we're not providing workforce to meet the labor needs for those industries, it's an effort in vain for us to try to do attraction efforts. So we are suggesting a really amped-up effort relative to workforce development. We've already begun a conversation with a number of partners, looking at how we can tap into STEM education and launch a new initiative. This is a growing area of emphasis statewide. Increasing dollars are being made available at the state and federal level. We feel like after initial discussions with some potential partners, there is a real opportunity here, and there's definite interest from the partners that we've talked about. Again, I mentioned the Central State University 1890 Land Grant. There are dollars available to them. We've already had an initial discussion. In fact, Mark and I did with the university president about a week ago. Very, very positive discussion, and they are all in to be a partner in that effort. But we want a diverse array of educational partners. So we want to reach out to Xenia Community Schools. They've already expressed an interest. Green County Career Center, Clark State University, any area educational institutions that we can partner with in order to achieve success here is time and effort well spent. But beyond that, we want to make sure that we're also tapping into our industry partners, understanding what are labor force needs that have a connection back to STEM education that our local industries need. With that, we've begun a discussion initially proctored by Councilman Lauterbach with Ohio Robotics. They're very interested in working with us here in Xenia to really launch an effective series of initiatives related to STEM education. So it's an area where there's a lot of opportunity. It's a real catchphrase right now. I can't say that we're necessarily on the front end of it, but I think we're right in the middle of the fray and can position ourselves well. This is an area where we may also need to see some additional resources in the future, though I don't have it marked there. I apologize. Another critical area where we are currently pursuing opportunities, Training and Innovation Center. We're working with a developer who has property, who has developed some related facilities, institutions at a couple of other places in Ohio, looking at skilled trades training. For 30 years or more, we've been telling students that they have to go to college and to get a degree in philosophy to make something of their life. Reality is, there are excellent jobs in welding and plumbing and all kinds of skilled trades with opportunities for individuals to start their own businesses, walking out, in some cases, making 50, 60, 70,000 dollars a year, which is well above the median household income here in Xenia. So again, there's an opportunity here for us to try to position ourselves, create an environment where we're training those types of skilled laborers and providing them for not only our area workforce, but as a regional workforce provider. So again, we'll be wanting to partner with colleges and other institutions and with the industries around here to make sure that we're driving any training toward meeting their needs. And again, we'd like to see a facility here that's specializing in that, and we are working with the developer on that conversation. Couple of additional other initiatives in this area we'll be focusing on next year, Internship and Work Shadowing Program. New dollars coming available at state and federal level for internships and work shadowing. As we talked about with council in budget discussion, we're kind of shifting around dollars internally to provide an internship opportunity in the city manager's office this year. Of course, we want to work in partnership with one of our area universities to do that. But beyond paid internships, there are work shadowing and experiential internship opportunities that we can position ourselves and provide, you know, quality experiences, not only for this, through employment with the city, but employment locally with some of our local industries and businesses. So that'd be an area of focus moving forward. And finally, we want to do a job fair. Again, not one of those really revolutionary ideas, but one of those things that really works, connecting people with openings and openings with people to make sure that our local businesses have their labor needs met, making sure that folks who are looking for jobs locally are aware of the opportunities that are out there. We've discussed different approaches. One approach to this might be what's called as a reverse job fair. A couple of those have been done in the region recently to some positive success. And essentially, what that is, instead of having businesses set up booths talking about the positions they have open, we would take a facility and we would have individuals who are seeking jobs present themselves and line up prospective businesses who are looking for those types of individuals and kind of reverse the job-seeking process. So again, we'll be looking at conducting a job fair in our community in 2015. Next category we want to highlight, Town and Gown. I've talked a lot about this over recent years, mentioned in, again, some of the overlapping areas. areas, but there are some specific things relative to relationships with area education institutions that we want to pursue moving forward. Joint service and purchasing. We're already in some discussions with Central State and Xenia Community Schools on how we can collaborate, partner relative to our fleet maintenance programs, as well as commodities purchasing. This not only can provide, I think, enhanced services, it can reduce costs for all those entities, which which brings value for the whole community. We also want to pursue some advanced partnerships, and by this, we've listed several specific examples. We've officially received a letter from Central State University requesting a discussion on annexation. We'll be putting together a, I don't want to say proposal, but a layout of the process and presenting that back to their board of trustees, hopefully sometime first quarter of next year. But they've expressed that interest, they feel more than from a financial sense, they really want to be attached to our community in the truest truest sense of the word. But of course, as we've discussed with council previously, there are service enhancement opportunities that can both provide new resources financially for the city as well as reduce operating costs for Central State University. So that's an advanced partnership that we are suggesting be pursued. Business incubation, specifically at Central State, they have this program now. We want to look at how we can partner with them and open up new opportunities within the city. Toawa, the development branch from Central State University has made an initial commitment for Old East High School. Through the 1890 land grant status, they have dollars, from what we are told, that have been committed that can be used for capital improvement, for renovation of that facility. We have from the president ward that they are committed to ensuring that that historic treasure is preserved and preserved in a way that can be beneficial to the entire community. And so we'll be in plans and negotiations with them on how to make that a reality. Finally, the other thing we want to do is make market connections. We've talked a lot with our regional universities about the needs their students have, that their staff have, and and how our local businesses can meet those needs. So we want to make sure we are making the connections between those service and and supply needs with our local businesses. So we want to be a facilitator of that conversation, and we'll be pursuing some efforts to to do that. So that's Town and Gown. Couple more categories we want to cover, and then we'll open it up for some questions and discussion. Next one is housing and neighborhood revitalization. As I talked about when we opened up, as we look at positioning ourselves for economic success, we cannot look at solely the economic factors, but rather the other factors that we would traditionally categorize under community development issues. We can position ourselves to attract new businesses and new jobs, but we need quality and diverse options for housing for those individuals to live in. So we recognize that we need to focus on neighborhood outreach. We want to look specifically this next year at some initiatives at the neighborhood level for neighborhood cleanup. As council's talked about and asked me to follow up on, we want to make sure that all of our rights of way are cleared. We want to provide opportunities for residents. If we have major cleanup projects, let's provide resources and a date or a weekend to do that. We've got some commitments and for assistance from both Rumke and the Green County Solid Waste District to provide assistance and resources to do that. One of the things that I think we'll be recommending next year, our solid waste collection contract runs out next year. I'll be recommending to council some type of of an arrangement where we look at, instead of the bins for recycling, that we move to carts. It's a little bit of an upfront investment, but if we do the large carts for both recycling and refuse collection, we create a cleaner, more contained environment, which should have immediate results in terms of improving aesthetics in the neighborhood during trash collection periods. But additionally, if we can improve our recycling rates, we will by extension then reduce the cost of our trash collection service because we are reducing the tipping fees. In recent discussions with Rumke, per capita, we're one of the largest trash-producing communities in Rumke's service area. That's a problem. When we have a single-digit recycling rate, that's a policy issue we need to get behind and and we need to figure out a solution to, because it's costing our residents, our consumers, money to throw their trash away. So how can we facilitate options to reduce that cost, improve the condition of our neighborhoods, and and make the situation in our neighborhoods better? Another area here we talked a lot about, it'll be a continuing emphasis next year and moving forward, enhanced code enforcement. It's been a priority area of this council. We've heard that loud and clear, and we'll move forward with that. As discussed in the budget work session, we are adding the seasonal code enforcement. There's no additional cost to that. That's been factored in with the previous rate increase that council already approved, and so we will be looking to do that roughly April to September next year, sometime in that timeframe. And then, of course, we'll be redoubling up our effort on a vacant building program. Successful to date, still will be a challenge. We're still facing some obstacles with that, but in general, it's been a model. We've gotten requests from a number of communities for more information on our program. So I think regionally, we've become kind of a leader in that area, trying to improve property values and aesthetics in our community, and I think council's to be applauded for for taking that political risk. Two more categories we want to cover. The next one is recreation, entertainment, and trail system. The Play Xenia initiative has been a year-long initiative doing outreach to the community to assess what their entertainment and recreation needs are. We've gotten a lot of good information from that, and it's evolving into some actionable steps. We had hoped to be, and by we am referring to the steering committee for Play Xenia, had hoped to be in a position to make some more definitive recommendations to council by the end of this calendar year, but frankly, we're just, we've run out of time. So we are approaching early first quarter next year, a point where I think we'll come back with a recommendation on where to move, if at all, on the discussion for a recreation center in conjunction with the Y. Now, again, we've had some really positive conversations with a number of partners, including the Health District and the Senior Center, on potential partnerships, and we've been discussing with Xenia Nazarene, opportunity of of looking at their property. So those conversations are in process right now. We're trying to filter down to a model that we think is workable financially and bring back a recommendation to council. As we indicated before, and I'll stress it again, I do not see a scenario where this is affordable without some type of a ballot initiative, but we're trying to bring as many of resources to the table as possible to be leveraged so that we can minimize any any need that we would have to go back to the ballot for. Second, as discussed in our five-year CIP, we're looking at some really positive park enhancements, so really capitalizing our park enhancement program. We have put in the budget and we're recommending three parks for additional build-out and new amenities, and that would include, the initial discussion was a splash pad at Shawnee Park, although we're looking at the possibility of perhaps a different venue for that splash pad. Of course, we're also looking at some new amenities and a development at Saul Ernivitz and at Sterling Green. At this point in time, those are all still in the budget. However, I want to want to let council know, my thought right now is that we need to pull back on that a little bit, probably reduce the scope of that project next year to two parks rather than three, and that's primarily because with the slate of projects that we have, both capital and administrative, predominantly being the the code update that Brian is doing, the city planner, I'm just worried about our capacity to manage three-park development projects next year. So I think, obviously, before we would move on that, we'll bring it back to council for a final decision anyway, but my my thought process right now is we'll we'll reduce the scope of that a little bit and push that third park project project back. Other item of note here, a new initiative that I personally am very excited about, I think it's a really good opportunity for the community. We are recommending that we start the process of assessing and planning for some type of trail and arts festival for the city of Xenia. We've talked at length with not only council, but members of the community, members of the bicycling community, consultants about this asset that we have in Xenia that's the trail system. We're not utilizing it to its fullest potential. We think there's an opportunity to partner with a number of of public and private interest and host a significant event here in the city focused on the trails. And so we are recommending some initial seed money to get us started, to identify some individuals who can assist us in that process and really start the legwork. Our suggestion is it's probably about a three-year process. First year to line up parties who can help coordinate, getting initial interest to help fund the event and to to organize it. Second year to to plan in earnest and then to carry it out in the third year. So we're suggesting a $10,000 commitment this year. Will we need that much? Probably not. We'd like to have the seed money available, probably an increased commitment in the following two years to be able to produce and 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 actually conduct the event. But again, we want to do this professionally and cost-consciously so that we're positioning this, that it's not a an ongoing, you know, open wound for the city, but rather that it can support itself. So we're recommending launching that initiative next year, hopefully with a a program date of 2017. Final category, highlighted a number of them here, but the final one we wanted to touch on this evening is regulatory environment. Just mentioned, and we've had discussions with council, you've approved funding for the zoning code update. Applaud council for this and applaud our city planner for taking on this significant project. It's long overdue, but it can position us very, very effectively to be able to meet contemporary needs in terms of zoning standards. Probably a two-year process from start to finish, from from where we are today to to getting the new code on the books. But again, we want to focus on contemporary standards, contemporary needs, making sure that we're allowing for the the ease of of conducting business in our community. Finally here, we want to create a business and friendly environment. This is an initiative, it's more really a philosophy that we want to carry forward. You've heard me talk a lot about what I've been encouraging with our staff, which is solution orientation. We want, we want to, instead of telling people what they can't do, what they shouldn't do, find ways to to meet their needs, find solutions to problems. So we want to be business-friendly, and and one of the ways to do that is a multi-agency streamlining effort. So we want to, and have already initiated some discussions with the building department, as well as the health department, to make sure that we have projects with local businesses or even residents for expanding, modifying, changing something on their buildings or property, that we are streamlining that process as much as possible, coordinating those efforts to minimize the inconvenience to people and minimize the bureaucracy. And then with that, assuming the completion of the city hall project, we'll be very pleased to be able to provide centralized services. All of our critical regulatory services within a block of each other between the fire division and and the new city hall, be able to just provide an environment where we have centralization of services and in a facility that's meeting contemporary needs. Overall, we want to take a business-friendly approach, and we want that to not only be a moniker that that we reinforce, you know, from a from a a marketing perspective, but have it truly be the reality and have folks feel comfortable with their interactions with city business and and regulatory functions. So I've talked a lot for the last 45 minutes, and yet I didn't cover everything that's on, you know, on the the trivial pursuit pinwheel here. But it gives you an overview of of the direction we want to take our economic development efforts, and again, not even just economic development, but our development efforts in general. So the takeaway is really, ED360 is a multifaceted effort, seeking contemporary and comprehensive approach to economic and community development opportunities. Key areas of focus that I hope are takeaways for for folks from from the discussion. We want to address marketing needs and enhance our outreach to better position us. Two, we want to establish and reinforce a business-friendly environment. Three, we want to invest strategically. And four, we want to leverage partnerships and relationships. In addition to additional financial resources, we have to really be mindful of of how we're utilizing our time, how we're interacting with people, how we're leveraging partnerships, and position ourselves for success. So with that, we'll open it up for any questions, comments, concerns that you have, and appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much. Questions, please?
I didn't know if yours was. Some of these costs that we have allocated to this, I'm a bit concerned if we really can do a whole lot with it, like $5,000 for for the OpenX program. I mean, are we just looking maybe as a first year and we'll see how it goes, or?
That program in particular and some of the others, that program and and some of the others in particular, we want to pilot them and want to make sure, again, that we're establishing some metrics for these things, so if they're successful, we can expand them and continue them. If they're not, we look at how we amend them or replace them. So, you know, we're looking at some initial investments to make sure that we're utilizing those very scarce resources effectively without putting too much into a program that just isn't going to work.
And then along that same lines, when it comes to marketing, the the slide talks about the position we're going, that you're wanting to create, just more of a public relations coordinator, but what about funds specifically for those contractual services and and beyond that? What were you guys anticipating? It says 30 to 80,000 dollars from various funds. Would that's just for that office, or are we looking at other?
Okay, let me explain that. What we mean there is, on the low end, if we're looking at a part-time position at less than 30 hours a week to keep us under that ACA healthcare requirement, you're looking at that $30,000 range. If you're looking at a full-time 40-plus hours a week, overtime exempt, with benefits, healthcare and pension, you're looking closer to that $80,000 range, and that's probably high-end. We always estimate higher rather than lower. That position would cover a diversity of 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 responsibilities and roles, and the funding for that would be split between our general fund, as well as split over our utility funds, which is a pretty typical practice with our administrative positions, because they will be providing services for water systems, sewer systems, so forth. Again, a good example would be the consumer reports that we have to do every year. Currently, we produce those in-house. Are they effective? I guess, but I think we can produce a better quality product if you have a professional who's taking the core information and putting them out there in a way that that folks can really absorb and utilize. So again, it's, it makes sense to utilize some additional funds to offset the overall cost from 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 general fund. So that's when we say from for various funds, that's how it would constitute. So that full impact would not be borne by the general fund, the majority of it would. I think typically, we're probably looking at, what, maybe 30% or so that's borne by sanitation, sewer, storm, and 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 water for a position like this.
Maybe, it could be closer to 50/50. It depends. I mean, I think we have to take into take into account exactly what that position's going to do, but I mean, if you look at a lot of the things, just like you said, a lot of this is split administratively, and we'd have, you know, maybe anywhere from 30 to 40% being general fund or or our state gas and vehicle license fund, and then some of the water sewer sanitation being, you know, 40, 50% of it. So somewhere along the lines we get to our.
So I mean, that that talks to to the management and the PR side of it, but but not the brand development?
Yeah, and what we're suggesting is that there's there's some additional work that needs to be done, and we'd look at, you know, some type of process, RFP process to, or RFQ process to to line up those services, picking up with where we've where we've evolved to over the last year, and making sure that we're really zoning in on what's our best brand position. And then how do we put together a marketing package that, you know, puts the city in the best light, that emphasizes the opportunities that we have here locally? So yeah, you know, those are some skills that we don't possess in-house, and I think even with this new position, we need some third-party assistance, making sure that we're we're best positioning ourselves.
So we'll be expecting then to see more information when it comes to dollar figures on that.
Absolutely.
And one last question, and I'll turn on one of my other colleagues, but when it comes to, we talked on one of these mini-slides, the business-friendly environment. The city of Xenia only controls a small portion. We do zoning and utilities. The county controls the largest portion of health inspection, electrical, plumbing, building in general. Have we have not, or do we have a plan in 2015 to sit down with the county? And, you know, they're they're a vendor of our cities, and we represent our taxpayers. I get a lot of calls from contractors who say that process is a pain in the the butt. They do not want to speak up because they have to deal with these inspectors. So I think maybe the city role has to step in and be the, you know, the thorn in the side for a while.
And we are uniquely positioned to do that, because at the end of the day, the county building department is working for the city of Xenia. We are, it is a financial arrangement where they are subsidized through, you know, through a fee structure to be able to provide those services for us. And I think we have a willing party in Al Kuzma. My experience is that he is very good to work with, he's very solution-oriented. Our experience is also that some of their inspectors are not so great to work with. So we've already begun to engage in that discussion. Likewise, with the health department, had a great discussion. Our health commissioner is top-notch, and she understands the challenge that they face in terms of, you know, the perception that people have about their operations. They're very zealous about what they do, and they're very effective with it. But again, we want to position them, and I think we can serve to streamline that process. And we've already begun to discuss some strategies in which we might be able to do that. So you're right, we don't uniquely control those, but I think we're well-positioned to, you know, to leverage some improvement.
Okay. It'll take, I don't think it'll take hardly any cost for us to at least start those conversations.
And again, that's And again, that OpenX program can really help on both of those fronts. Not with everything that our businesses or residents would be looking at doing. But the OpenX program for our business community can serve as an initial platform to help guide those businesses through that process. And we feel like it's worth a pilot and worth trying to bring some improvement to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other questions, comments, please?
Go ahead.
Oh.
Well, I just want to thank staff. This is well thought of, and I agree with almost everything. Almost everything. But let me, especially the last part, being business friendly, I think. I've heard from several new businesses that's opened up in Xenia in the last year, and I go to all of them and say, "How did the city treat you?" And they have been nothing but, nothing but high praise, and I appreciate that. We haven't had that luxury in the past. But anyway, I just was looking through my notes here. And I'm glad that you and city manager and our economic development director is going to the ICSC training. I believe there's been some past council people who are no longer here that did not like to see our supervisors go out of town. But I think it's very important that we have a presence at these conferences, and especially since you're going to be honing in on hotels and food service. So you're not just going there and walking around, say, yeah, so you're honing in on that. And also, I will piggyback on Vice President Long. You know, at one time in the city, we had city inspectors, and I'm glad, maybe in the last year or so again with Al Kuzma, of course, he's only one. I've had complaints about the inspectors, and I've had complaints from the health department. So there's a new health department director, and I think Al Kuzma is more in tune to work with the city, so.
Yeah, I think we will, if we do not step in and try to facilitate some better operations, better relationships, I think, particularly with the health department, I think, I think things will deteriorate again. We're starting to see, for example, we've seen more new housing starts in Xenia this year than the prior three years combined. So as you start seeing more activity, they're going to continue to get backlogged again. So we need to be out in front of that, need to be working with Al and making sure that, you know, whatever we can do to streamline that. And where they're not cutting it, we need to hold them accountable to it, so.
And lastly, lost my train of thought. As far as the budget is concerned, I am a big fan of economic development. I think the whole council made them, made that their number-one priority. And as far as budget items, I don't have a problem. I think our budget for economic development should be probably double what it is. So that's just my personal opinion. And on this, on the person, the new PR person, whether that's in-house or we outsource that, I believe in you get what you pay for. And I believe in hiring a top-notch, experienced person in this field rather than a, like an intern, because again, you're going to get what you pay for. And I really, as far as our budget goes, I would like to see that economic development, to me, equals jobs, and that's what we need in this city's jobs, so, thank you.
Other comments, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. So downtime revitalization, retention expansion, business attraction, top three? I mean, are these in order of our top three priorities?
No, I think we picked some of them that were key, noting that, I mean, to go over everything in detail tonight, we'd be here for several hours. I think these are among the top priorities. But, you know, I can point to something like healthcare and education and say, I mean, that's critical of this community. That's one we chose not to cover because we don't have unique control over that. But I think certainly among the most important are probably the marketing piece. I think workforce development is very, very critical. Business attraction as well as expansion and retention efforts are also very, very important. But I think the unique situation is, and the reason I like this model is that it's, you know, all these categories really are at interplay with one another. They feed off of each other, and they're very comprehensive. So, and some areas are certainly more important than others, but they all carry their own weight.
How are they lining up with our X-Plan? As far as the top priorities on our X-Plan?
This was built really with that as the backbone. And so one of the things that we'll produce ultimately in the final document is basically a matrix where we cross-reference all of that. The city planner spent quite a bit of time going through and categorizing. One of the things that we lacked, I think really effectively after the first, you know, year or so of X-Plan was a process or a document or something to really continue to carry out a lot of what X-Plan prescribed. This is, this takes us that next level and provides that bridge to really move some of those specific goals and objectives that were in X-Plan and move it into reality. Again, this is not everything. I mean, there's a lot more, you know, in terms of individual items we'll be pursuing among these categories. But again, it's all a direct option from X-Plan.
I mean, if I'm adding correct, you know, on the high side at $80,000 on the marketing, we're looking at $172,000?
In that pool market.
I guess my question would be, you know, do we have the resources or the expertise to, that's needed to achieve these top priorities in-house? If not, what kind of criteria are we going to look at for outsourcing this and getting someone in here that can accomplish these things?
I think it's been the mutual goal of staff and council to position ourselves to be able to build the capacity in-house. So as we look to these different categories and how we do that, I think we've made some steps in the right direction. I think we have to continue to be engaged, as Councilman Lotterback talked about. We need to be outside of Xenia occasionally. We need to be at trainings and conferences, exposing ourselves to new ideas and opportunities. Need to be encouraging those training and development opportunities with our staff. The marketing piece, I feel really pretty passionately that we need someone in-house that's available on a regular basis to coordinate those efforts with regard to brand management and marketing and public relations. And we are doing this every day. And so we really, and we've been relying on staff who I think have been effective, maybe not efficient in producing materials and so forth. So I think there's a better way to do it. Is it a lot of money? Yeah, it's a lot of money to bring another position on. But the flexibility, the consistency, and just core capacity that is built by adding that position, I think, is worth the cost.
What about our, I mean, you mentioned retention and expansion. You also mentioned, oh, shoot. I don't know. You know, I know our reports from GAIN, you know, talked about business and retention, talked about, you know, programs using, you know, NICS codes and all that to try to get businesses in here that align with the businesses that we have. I guess, I guess what concerns me a little bit about what we're looking at here is, you know, I don't think this Carter and Klein, to me, that sounds like somebody that's going after entrepreneurs that want to open a business. I mean, I think we need to be on the forefront, not saying, "Well, here, we're going to have these people available to you." You know, we need to be touching these businesses every single month and finding out what their needs are and reaching out to them more so than them coming to us. And I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, we spent a lot of money last year with GAIN. So how are these programs aligning with what we've already done? And when we move forward here, and we put something out for an RFP, how are, who's going to write that RFP to make sure that it aligns with what we've already done so that not, so that somebody, we're not redoing what we've already done? I mean, we saw a need in what we did already, so let's continue with what we've already done and continue to move forward instead of just taking a couple of reports, throwing them on the shelf again, and starting over. Because that's what we've done over and over again in the last six years, seven years that I've been on council.
Well, I would say, you know, I think we're changing that trend, and this is evidence of it. Because I think in past years, if you take X-Plan, it would have sat on the shelf. But I think you're seeing X-Plan being carried out right here. And I think we can point to a lot of specific goals and objectives in X-Plan that have already been accomplished. And so I think that's part of the theme, and certainly something I reiterate a lot with my staff, is that we're not going to do a study to do a study. If it makes sense to do a study and we need that as part of a planning process, fine, as long as implementation is the objective, not just studying something. I think as we look at business outreach, as we look at R and E and so forth, the key factor, and I think Fred would certainly agree with this, it's relationship building. It's establishing a rapport with our business, with our business community, our business leaders individually, understanding what their workforce needs are, understanding what kind of regulatory challenges they are facing in our community, and how do we fix that. It's being able to have that dialogue on a regular basis, understanding the labor market, understanding the other challenges that they face, and then positioning our community to meet those needs or to remove obstacles. So with regard to those types of efforts, I think it comes back to relationship building, establishing rapport, and advancing things. Now, you know, do we have all the answers on all of this? No. Do we have to continue to grow and expand and build our capacity, Steve, myself, other members of our staff? Absolutely. But I am consistently impressed with the ability of this staff to rise to the challenge. And we really have some quality people. And as we've talked about before, we have some people that we may not traditionally associate with economic development, but play a very, very important role. City planner, city engineer, absolutely essential in these efforts. Our fire chief, with our discussion with Mr. Beauregard for the entertainment center, one of the most complimentary, or one of the best compliments I got was how good it was to work with the fire chief and how unusual it was to have the fire chief sitting at the table on a project like this, and he works all over the country. So again, you know, us taking the extra efforts to try to leverage the capacity and staff we have, building, you know, adding on to that capacity through training, through experiential efforts. At the end, it all boils down to working with people, working with the people in our community and developing those relationships. So it's probably a longer-winded response than you'd expect.
Well, I mean, I guess, are we going to have some, you know, specific and measurable outcomes, you know, placed on economic development? I mean, you're on the hot seat, placed on our economic development director, that we can gauge what we're doing? I mean, no offense to you, Steve, but there's seven people on council that don't know what our economic development director, what he does.
First and foremost, my expectation would be the council put me on the hot seat. Because, you know, Steve, the development folks, planning, they report to me. So if they're not meeting council's expectations programmatically, personally, whatever it is, let me know, and we'll work to correct it. And we've had some of those discussions about areas that we're deficient, that we need to improve in. So I invite that. I want to be, you know, engaging with council in that discussion. Relative to a lot of these programs, yes. And that's one of the things I talked about early on in the presentation, it needs to be measurable. We don't want to be throwing money at programs or projects that are not yielding results. Now, much to everyone's chagrin, can we say, "How many jobs do we create? Is that a measure?" No, that's not a fair measure because we can't control that. When we look at these specific programs, we can establish metrics for those programs that help determine the relative success. And I'm searching for an example off the top of my head, I'm not coming up with one. Now, does that mean we don't look at things like employment rates, unemployment rates and all? No, absolutely, we'll look at those things. It's very important that we stay abreast of what the trends are. We try to anticipate these things and respond to them. But we have to be very strategic in what metrics we're applying so that we're fair to the measurement. We don't, you know, we want to make sure that we're fair to the programs that we're measuring and the metrics that we're assigning. So I think the answer is absolutely. That's contrary to our operation. We have not been a, an organization that's been very focused on performance measurement. But I think if there's an area we need to really turn the corner, this is the area.
And then the last thing, under retention and expansion, you had the Taste of Xenia and the Business Fair listed there. I mean, you know, I personally have worked with the Springfield Chamber. And I mean, to me, those are programs that should be chamber-run and chamber-driven, and they are in the city of Springfield. And I guess it concerns me that the city's having to take that, I mean, have we talked to Alan and said, "Look, you know, I mean, this isn't our responsibility. This is somewhat of the businesses' and the chambers' responsibility for some of these programs."
Well, if I may address that. One thing to keep in mind too, especially with Springfield, the Springfield Chamber of Commerce handles all of the economic development for the city of Springfield. So when you're talking about, well, the Chamber does that, chambers also their economic development are. Unlike here, where we're separated. And I think the conversations that Mr. Merriman and I have had, yes, the Chamber needs to be one of those very active partners, especially in doing things like a Taste of Xenia or a Business Fair. Because they have, you know, their abilities to reach out to their members to help supplement what we do in our outreach efforts. Quite frankly, most of our outreach efforts are concentrated more on our industrial base, not so much on our retailers. Where when you look at especially something like a Taste of Xenia, that's really more retail-driven. And that's something where, yes, we can work with the Chamber actively as a partner and get them engaged to help us.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we need to have a hard conversation with the Chamber and say, "Look, you should be more than, you know, about recruitment of Chamber members." I mean, because sometimes I think that's what our Chamber's number-one function is, is driving membership, you know?
Yeah, I think we've got a good relationship. I know we meet regularly, Steve and I, and others, staff-wise, with not only the Chamber, but with the county development department. They are another really important player in the conversation. Have nothing but nice things to say about the new director. It was a decision that should have been made a long time ago. They are tremendous resources, and I really feel positive about the relationship. Now, to put this on the record, do I think that our Chamber necessarily fills the full role that it should? No. I think they're a little too introspectively focused on their current members rather than looking at the bigger picture and how they can expand now their membership with the success of their existing memberships by looking outward. Like, there's value there. But at the end of the day, they're a separate entity. So we want to be a partner with them without, you know, without dictating to them. But I think you're right, I think they definitely need to be involved in those efforts and should be a direct partner with us.
Just to, I guess, to back up on the retention and expansion, I mean, Carter and Klein, I mean, how does that, how does their role kind of align with what we've already done? And what, you know, Fred's report talks about in business retention.
Well, again, what they would do is fill a very specific role. That would be acting as an owner's rep with contractors. So these aren't, these are, their role would be to, A, help businesses assess their facility needs, but only when they're ready for expansion. So they can make a very good decision as to, "Do I need to expand my existing business in place? Or do I need to build a new building? Or find a new building? Which makes the most economic sense for me?" So that, obviously, that's something that is not going to happen on an everyday basis. The other thing they will do is when a company decides, and it could be a retailer that's looking to open, it could be an industrial folk. "I need space, but I'm not a contractor. How can I really know that I'm getting a good deal on the space that I'm looking to lease?" These folks have that kind of experience and work with people that can, they can bring to the table to say, "Okay, this is what this facility needs as far as upgrades. If you're looking at two different facilities, this one is probably better than this because..." And look at those trade-offs. So it's a very specialized service that they would be providing.
And I don't think we're focusing, you know, again, some of the other things that we will do are not necessarily listed here. Another good example of relationships that we need to leverage, Councilman Lotterback paid me to say this, but real estate agents. I mean, we need to have a good working relationship with real- I mean, we need to have a good working relationship with real estate agents. And there might be a formal program where we're meeting with them on a regular basis to, to engage in dialogue. They see what market trends are, not only in residential issues, but, you know, they understand a lot about the business climate.
We like to eat.
So, you know, that's another resource. So, you know, again, there are other things that, you know, this is not a comprehensive list of everything that we'll look at doing and all the resources we'll look at leveraging, but it's a pretty good overview and a snapshot of, 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 you know, in general what we're looking at.
I can recommend a couple of good realtors.
I'll leave it alone.
I know. Bonnie Cray. While you were up there, didn't them recently, was it T-Jar? Or what, what company was at the industri- that there was, that they had a electric capacity issues?
Actually, no, their issues out in the industrial park had nothing to do with, they, they had excess electric capacity out there. In that particular case, they looked at potentially expanding their building. But what they found, and they got estimates from a number of different contractors, was that it was going to be an exorbitant cost to expand and it was actually cheaper for them to relocate into another building, which they did. They moved into the old Brown Publishing Building there on Cincinnati.
But it wasn't, yeah, is that an example of what this company would do?
And that's something, again, that's something that Carter and Klein, yeah, could assist with because I could tell you, they were looking at several different buildings and really having a tough time deciding which, which building would be best suited for their needs. And, and, you know, someone like a Carter and Klein can really help with that, get them good cost estimates. And because they have experience in that, also be able to look at those and say, you know what? You're being sold a bill of goods, it's not going to cost anywhere near that amount to actually do this, you might want to try to get another estimate from someone or, mm, you know what, that's really good price and there's a real reason it's a really good price. They're not including things that they need to be including.
And would a priority be to stay in Zonia?
Absolutely.
Well, I'm-
Absolutely.
For that service, that would be a great one.
Okay, I mean, they wouldn't be looking at helping them find a place in Beaver Creek, yes?
No. No.
Nothing against Beaver Creek.
No, we, we want to help all folks stay and grow right here in Zonia.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want, I think this is one of the most exciting and great plans that, that I've seen in a long time. And I just really want to commend you and your staff on doing an excellent job. I mean, it's, it really shows that, I mean, you've listened, you've researched and you've developed a, a clear picture of what we can be about. And so I really, really do appreciate that. My question, most of them have been answered. I was going to talk a little about, a little bit about the timeline, but I think you've kind of addressed that anyway. So, you know, I, I just think it's wonderful, it's exciting when you, when you read through this and when, as you spoke and we listened, just to see that there is something good for the future of Zonia. I just think it's great. And, you know, we'll address those other things as they come, but I think overall, the whole picture shows a, a great picture for Zonia's future. So, thank you.
Thank you. And in regards to my comments, my congratulations to you and your staff, Mr. City Manager. This is by far the best plan that I've seen while on council in regards to this. And more importantly, as you've already pointed out, the integration of that in a major project, the X Plan that we had already studied, prepared to implement, are starting to implement and are now integrating it with our economic development activities. I guess the two things that I would like to spend just a small amount of time on is something I think is, is very important both for our present, given our financial situation that we've been discussing at length, as well as our future opportunities that are not just tomorrow, but, and not even next year, but the next five years, 10 years, 15 years. And there specifically, I'm talking about the excellent work that's been done in the town and gown activities where you have expertly through partnerships with Central State, as well as our developing partnership with Zonia Community Schools, put together opportunities that are not just going to benefit the city of Zonia, but will benefit our partners, will make our operations more efficient, will bring value to them where we can, again, partner together where one plus one plus one is not three, but 33. The item which I believe will put us five to 10 years into the future, I really enjoyed seeing the workforce and development piece of the pie in the STEM education initiative and the Training and Innovation Center. I, I come from an engineering background, I greatly appreciate where we as a nation are going in that. And I think that overall, Zonia has been modest, slow in that area. So I think that an initiative in this area, again, tying back to some of those partners that we're going to be assisting economically through our partnerships to do that and put more emphasis on that is a truly excellent way to plan for our five to 10 year future. And certainly at the same time, recognizing that a good deal of our workforce still enjoys, as the saying goes, doing something with their hands. Other than the Green County Career Center, we are not very well equipped in the county for, for training our personnel for that. And I think that putting something together like that in Zonia, finding those partnerships there would go a long way, as much of Zonia will be requiring those kinds of services for, for many years to come as we are a, an older and, and some, and very older community. So my, my congratulations to you on those. My essential question is, is not so much question, is just an observation. I am a true believer in the internship and co-op program. We've had some conversations about that. And I would just encourage you as city manager and your staff to look for those opportunities with these partners wherever possible, because although they might not be as, we would all agree, the top mind in a particular area, be it marketing, whatever it is, they will certainly be an individual who is probably far along in their education and has been instructed by some of the best, our local professors and such, and those who will be on the cutting edge of new thinking in different areas. And I think that is, bringing that into the city, I think would bring us long-term benefit, both immediately as well as many years into the future. So, again, my congratulations, I think it is a, a superior piece of work and I look forward to seeing the implementation and details of it regarding how we will be allocating some of these funds and what specific steps and metrics you'll put forward with them as there will be the, the true measure of how, how successful we'll be.
So thank you. I want to reiterate too, I'm really, really encouraged, a lot of what we talk about in these different proposals are, are relationships and partnerships with, with institutions and entities. And, you know, we are really blessed to have leadership that's emerged among a lot of these local institutions and agencies and so forth that are very community minded. They are behind the city, this community. And, you know, we can't do any of this alone, we need their help. They recognize there's a symbiotic relationship there and they embrace it. So I want to acknowledge those individuals and, you know, as I've reached out on a number of these initiatives already, the STEM piece for example, just a tremendously positive response. And that's really encouraging as we climb that hill of trying to achieve that, to have, you know, people around to support us and that.
I do want to piggyback on that as well because I've had extensive conversations with the president at Central State and we've been in numerous meetings, but, you know, along with these partnerships, we talk about the sharing from one to the other, but we also have to think about the effects that it has on neighborhoods. For instance, the Old East High Building, which is in the east, in the east end of town. And of course, that's the town where I, the side of town where I live. And, and often the people think that it's neglected and that there's nothing there and, and, you know, there's nothing to look forward to. But here is a plan that the president has for fixing up the building and all kinds of opportunities can emerge from that, educational opportunities and everything. So, you know, we, we, we look at them, but they're far lasting results because of it. And so it's really great. And then as far as internships, I know I met a Central State student, I was introduced by Lisa with the water, our water department and, not water department, but-
Water plant.
Water plant. And so a young man's working there and she's real pleased with his work and so that's another outreach program that we have. So, good things are happening.
What kind of, what kind of timeline are we looking at, you know, for, I guess, a recommendation budget to come back to us to, to get started on?
Well, as we indicated, most all of these, with a few exceptions, are included in, in the, 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 the most recent, recent budget documents that you've got. Now, we have some final tweaks to make in the final budget. Part of that is just pending council's general consensus tonight, we'll include those things in the final budget. From that point, once we, once we turn a, you know, turn a calendar to the new year, assuming council's support for that new position, we'd like to start to pursue that right away. Noting that, you know, by the time you advertise, vet resumes, schedule interviews, go through the whole process, you're talking probably three months.
Are we going, are we going to compare that in-house position to contractual services?
We certainly can. We've, we've done some research leading up to this recommendation. We, I had our HR director do some research about looking at other area comparables and what they do. Quite a few of them have a model similar to this where they have a full-time internal position. So we'll, we'll refine that overall. I, I still think having that capacity is really, really important to us on a number of planes. But in terms of, of the contractual role, we'll have to look at that more in depth and, and refine through, you know, through the specifications development process, what that RFQ will include and ultimately what that contract would include.
I'd add my emphasis to that development of internal capability. That individual hopefully would become a member of this community, fully invested in it and grow with the city as we grow these different pieces of the pie wedge.
So are we looking at end of January or?
For, for what specifically?
I, I guess for, you know, some of these recommendations and, and, you know, kind of a, more of a formal, this is, this is our timeline, this is what we plan on doing to, to start these steps to-
I think most of these initiatives will be started and we'll begin to engage them over the fourth, over the, the, the first quarter of next year. This is a lot and we are very, very administratively challenged in-house. So I want to be sensitive, you know, I don't want to overload anybody. And it's going to involve a number of different departments, not only the city manager's office and development, but obviously planning and, you know, public safety, public service as well with a number of these different initiatives. So we'll have to stagger them and, and stage them. Of course, you know, we're initiating, you know, the city planner, the new code update, that process already starts. Some of these things are really, you know, in process now. The marketing piece, I think we need to get rolling on it. So I would anticipate we would be in a position to get that position filled and engage some type of, some type of a contractual arrangement for the, for the additional pieces, hopefully by the end of first quarter next year. I'm just being realistic with, with, you know, what I know is out there and that, you know, in terms of the administrative workload.
Well, I guess the question is in terms of approval process, I think, in, in hearing the discussion today and councils, I think on a, as a consensus is in agreement with most, if not everything that was put forth. And as the city manager has said, those things are in the budget. So assuming that's the case, and I guess we don't want to assume that's the case, then as soon as it becomes able to, you know, be worked on, you know, the temporary budget would be, you know, approved, you know, at the next meeting, council meeting. So those items will be in the budget, even in the temporary budget, let alone the final budget. So if you're looking for an additional approval process beyond what we've discussed tonight, then I think that's something that I think the city manager would, would need to know because, you know, at this point, if we're moving forward, you know, given what was proposed today or if there's some other, you know, additional step that would be needed from, from council, we would, I think, need to know that at this point in time.
I guess where I'm confused is, other than adding the marketing position, what, I mean, are we going to have contractual services for some of this stuff? Are we going to do it all in-house? Are we, you know?
Well, relative to the-
You know, we got 172,000 laid out here, but, you know, it doesn't really specifically-
Relative specifically to the-
I mean, I mean, no offense, but this was kind of high level. I'm not-
Sure, sure. I didn't think you guys would want to get too far in the weeds. Mayor Shakerin. I, I think relative specifically to the marketing, there is an advantage to getting a person onboard who is a professional in the area to help us put together those specifications, taking what we've derived from the products that GAIN has put out there, getting that person familiar with those. So that's going to be, I think, a step that we engage after that position's filled. Because I need that person to coordinate those efforts in conjunction with the development department because they're going to be instrumental in carrying out, you know, those marketing functions. So I need to get that engaged and get a person onboard to really, I think, get into the, any contractual services. We do have a need to take us to that next level to, to, to understand how best to focus our marketing efforts and how best to position us from a brand perspective. So I think there is an additional external role that a contractor can play. Again, that process, I think, needs to be really led by that new position in conjunction with my office and the, and the development department.
So what I think I'm hearing from you is the first quarter, quarters, major activity would be filling that position that I believe we as consensus have, have endorsed. And a second quarter's activity would be that familiarization, development and strategy such that by the midpoint to end of that second quarter, that person could bring you and then could bring back to council a recommended slate of activities that should be contracted.
Yes, I think that's a fair statement. And again, you know, as this, all of this, you know, because I, the ultimate goal here is to have a, a planning document that we can utilize. And I think will be to the point, in first quarter, we can, we can, you know, provide that to council for, you know, for your reference. I think can lay some of that out in more detail, but, you know, that's, it's a ton of work. I mean, it's a lot of work that's gone into all of this and a lot of work moving forward. But I want to be realistic about the timeframes. I don't want to promise something that we can't. And, you know, we really need to get that position in place first.
From that perspective, you have my full support for that. Anything else?
Just one additional comment. Earlier it was mentioned about like groups like Ohio Robotics in the region and just from, from an industrial standpoint, there's, that was a spinoff of the Dayton Tooling Manufacturing Association. You know, we really have to, speaking from someone from the industrial base in this community in our region, Zonia is a almost non-player when we start looking at our manufacturing base in, in the region. So I would like to, to see us get more involved with Ohio Robotics and because twofold, one, it, it helps students learn STEM, but two, it starts getting our name out there on the banners, on the signs. And there's some leading small businesses, manufacturing companies in the area who participate in that.
Yes.
Who could look at Zonia for, for other things. And it could be a partnership with, with Central State, which is again, not something that many people look at as a, as a first choice in, in college in the region. Typically it's Wright State, but it is right here in our backyard.
And I can tell you that both the, the competition that was just held a few weeks ago, as well as the one that was in the spring, there were two essentially public sector sponsors of that Ohio Robotics Extreme Bot Competition. One was Montgomery County, the other was the city of Zonia.
Was there a, a company just recently that got a big hit somehow on the drone issue? I caught just something briefly on the news.
Wolpert, which is an engineering company based in Beaver Creek, was one of four companies nationally that was approved to fly drones commercially. And in the case of Wolpert, it was in two specific areas, one in Ohio, one somewhere out west, and, and they used them to do some detailed survey work. By the way, Wolpert was one of the companies that we had come out when we did that event at, at O B C H to talk about the potential of using that property for, for UAVs.
Mayor, I know we talked about UAVs and Central State and the land grant, whatever it is. You know, I mean, have we had discussions with Central State on possibly expanding their programs of, you know, with drones for agricultural use and stuff like that?
Specific conversation. And there are dollars available at the federal level that I think that we will be able to tap in to help encourage them.
As you said earlier, not every kid is college material. You know, there's companies in this area looking for CNC operators, there's companies looking for specialized welders.
Desperate.
And, and, yeah. So we need to, we need to connect the dots there, so.
That's why I was glad to hear the tie-in with the Career Center and Clark State and those, you know, those kinds. So that is, that's good.
And we want to be comprehensive, three-dimensional with it, looking, you know, the big picture instead of focusing on very narrow. But how do these things get in? instead of focusing on very narrow, like, how do these things get in together?
And, you know, the Career Center, they got, they have all these adult education programs, but yet, you know, I don't believe they have like a CNC program.
Well, they actually closed a lot of it. Yeah. They closed their CNC a few years ago, essentially because they couldn't get enough students to warrant keeping it open. And even their welding program now is actually being done in partnership with Clark State.
They've closed a lot. I think they closed most of medical building assistance and that, not our end, but the other one.
LPN, yeah.
They've closed those. They've kept their law enforcement adult ed open, but-
Well, like, like a lot of public entities, they're under some financial strain, and they can only keep open those, those, you know-
An interesting, interesting-
Lines that produce revenue for them.
Well, an interesting fact about that was that, I'd learned at the Green County Career Center, adult education had ran in the red their entire existence.
Really?
Yeah.
Only that one program, which was a law enforcement, had ever saw positive influx in revenue for it.
Yeah. I mean, I've heard stories about how people, they choked class just long enough that they got all their grant money in and their assistance, and then they'd never see them again. So.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Planner. Seeing no other business, I would move to adjourn, please.
Make a motion.
Motion by the Vice President, second.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.